All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five Farmington School Board Meeting. Welcome to those of you who joined us here tonight, and welcome to those of you joining us from home. Before we stand for the pledge tonight, we do have a couple of remembrances that we'd like to do. I meant to do this at the last meeting, but I didn't find out about this until after the last meeting. I had not seen it in the obituaries, but we recently lost Bill Seroyce. And Bill is the husband of Kathy Seroyce, who is a longtime speech pathologist here in our school district. And for those of you who may have known Bill or may not have known Bill, Bill was a... Had served many different offices here in town and at the state level for a number of years when he lived here in Farmington. He's a former selectman. He was a former Budget Committee member and a former representative to the State House of Representatives over in Concord. One of the things that I recall about Bill is how he would fight tirelessly for the schools when he did serve on the Budget Committee. He was a supporter of schools as he had three children that went through the district and, of course, a wife that worked here. So education was important to their family. So he recently passed away after a fairly lengthy illness on his... In his house on Orange Street. They will be doing a celebration of life for him, but in Greece where he's from. So I did have a chance to talk to his wife Kathy the other night. So our thoughts and prayers go out to the Seroyce family. This one's a little more difficult as it was quick and very unexpected. We'd like to remember Gil Barrios. Gil, as most of you know, was our student transportation director. For those of you that don't know him, he is the bus driver who wore the cowboy hat. That was his signature hat that everybody knew him by. Gil worked for the district for a number of years as a driver many years ago, and then worked for Saint Thomas in recent years. He was... He drove the kids to all their athletic events. And when... In the last few years, when we had a opening for a bus coordinator, I actually called him up and said, "Would you consider putting in for it?" At first, he said, "No." And then I made a second call and worked on him a little bit and said, "I think it's something, Gil, that you could do, and I think it's something that you could be good at, and we'd like to have you come back to Farmington." So he did apply for the position, and we were very impressed, those of us that were on the board at the time, when he came in for his interview. You know, Gil was very involved. He loved athletics. He especially loved football. He was involved with football in the infancy of the beginning of the program many years ago. And as many former students and athletes recalled after the announcing of his passing away, he used to host all the spaghetti dinners, him and his wife, at their house, which was right off the football field. So it was easy to go from football practice to a spaghetti dinner at Gil's house. I think what I will remember most about Gil is he would do anything for kids. Sometimes we'd have to say, "Gil, you know, hold on now. We've got to talk about this," you know? But if it was in the best interest of kids, that's what Gil always wanted to do. He cared deeply about the kids of this community. And our thoughts go out to his wife Brenda. I know they're going to have a memorial motorcycle run for him on Friday during the day. And then that evening, we'll have calling hours from five to seven at Beasley's, and I believe there's a celebration of life at local Hogs Pen afterwards to celebrate Gil's life. He's also a proud veteran and served our country for many years. So we remember Gil Barrios tonight. Would you please join me at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public participation at this time? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to jump down to the minutes. And actually, before we approve the minutes, later in the agenda, we do have a presentation about the Sue Anderson Memorial Fund. I know we have a couple of folks here tonight that are here to speak on that. So why don't we... I'll move that up in the agenda for you so you don't have to sit through all the boring stuff. How's that? And if you'd take the microphone and could introduce yourself through the microphone?
Right.
At the podium, sorry. And the reason we ask you to do that, sir, is because folks listening at home, they can hear who you are.
Absolutely, that's fine. Good evening. Thanks. I'm glad that we could be here tonight. My name is Doran Morford. I'm here with Paul Smith, who is a member of your high school faculty. We are here to present a proposal in memory of Susan Anderson, who taught here for many years in the elementary and middle school. We represent Middle Street Baptist Church, where Susan was also a longtime member, very active. She and I served together in many capacities at the church. It was probably her second greatest love after her work in Farmington. And when Susan died, we decided that we would... The church decided, and the group of deacons that Paul and I serve on, decided that we would like to do something in her memory here at the school to help her legacy live on. I've already been up and met with Giselle and got to see the classroom that's kind of been dedicated to her memory, which I think is terrific. But we also decided that we wanted something in, hopefully, a little more ongoing nature. So when she passed away, we came to the conclusion that we wanted to gather some funds to create a memorial fund for Susan here in Farmington, in the schools. We collected a little over eight thousand dollars that we would... Our proposal is that we would contribute it to the school. And our goal is that these funds would be used in order to help students and families who are food or housing insecure. They are having problems in those areas that this fund in Susan's name could perhaps be of help. We don't know who those students might be, but your staff will know, and that's the important part. So our hope is that you would approve the acceptance of this gift this evening. We don't know all the details about how this process would help or how it might best be organized. Our hope, as I said, is to go to meet the most immediate needs that I mentioned, and that it would be in Susan's memory. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'm happy to work with you if there's anything I could do to be of help in implementing the fund. As I said, the church has no business knowing where the funds go. We just want to know that they can be used to meet the greatest need and that it be done in Susan's honor. So thank you for allowing me to present this proposal. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Sure. Sir, may I ask, when we make the motion to accept the money, is the exact amount eight thousand dollars? Or is it... Do we have the exact amount?
The last figure I saw was eight thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents.
Well, we want to get it right because, you know, it's going to be part of the official minutes and the acceptance vote that we need to do.
It may or may not be... I don't think we've gotten any more funds in the last week. We kind of closed it off so we wouldn't have closure on it. That was the... That's the last figure I know.
I will say that some of us here on the board had an opportunity to attend her funeral at your church. And I was really impressed with... Just the church itself is beautiful and just the camaraderie and the fellowship amongst all of the, you know, church members and what you meant to Sue and what she meant to you was really a special day for us to be there. I know I get to see Paul that day as well. And Paul will be the in-house contact, obviously, and we'll be, you know, working with him on what he thinks would be, you know, best suited for the use of this money in her memory as he knew her not only as a professional colleague but as a member of his church as well. So we'd like to... If that's okay, Paul, we'll make sure we're...
He's been instrumental all the way along with this.
Okay. Anything from the board? Any questions or anything? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the funds for the Sue Anderson Memorial Fund in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents. Did I get that right?
Yes. Motion by Mrs. Lozey, second by Mrs. Doyle. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for helping Farmington.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would ask if we might... I know I could put the check in the mail. We would like to present it to the board, and the reason I would like to do that is Susan's father is still living, and I would love for him to be here for that presentation if you would find that agreeable.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just let Giselle know. We'll get that on the agenda, and we'll take care of that. Okay, minutes.
Can we review the sealed minutes? Are we going to table those? There's two sealeds.
Oh, are they in front of me? Where are this... They're not on here, are they? Oh, they are on here. Let's pass them around, and we will table them. Let's make a motion to table till the end of the meeting so we have a chance to review them. Can someone make a motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to table the minutes of June second, two thousand and twenty-five, non-public session one sealed, non-public session two sealed, until the end of the meeting.
All right. Now it's your job to make a motion to unseal, to remember. Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Parker. All those in favor? Okay. I'll take a motion for the rest of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June second, two thousand and twenty-five, public session, public session, and then non-public session three, four, and five.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, public session, non-public session one, and non-public session two.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion to accept the minutes of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, public session and non-public session one.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstention. Okay. Reports. SRO report.
Hello, everyone. We hope everybody's doing great on this Monday. Yeah, we welcome the kiddos back. We did a welcome-back raffle. It's a little tough for them, the first month getting used to the swing of things. The Valley View had quite a few kids participate in it, and they got their free ice cream coupons. Yeah, just getting back into the swing of things. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I don't... It wouldn't have been on this report, but will we... I think they were on the other reports. Will we start getting some look at truancy when that starts to kick in? And do you report the truancy numbers to us?
Not usually, but we have started having the meetings at the individual buildings. Those have... Those started... We didn't do them the first week because, obviously, we wouldn't have anything yet. But they did start the second week, and so we've been going through kids that have transferred out and just kind of looking at those and making sure they're all accounted for and stuff like that.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Henry Wilson.
Hi, everybody. Just knowing Gil personally, I just feel really blessed that, like, right before the first week of school, I got to take the ride with him to do the tour, the teacher tour and what we were going to do. And so I just want to extend my condolences to his family this evening. He was a great guy, and I just remember him walking into the building, and I'd say, "How's it going, Gil?" "Mighty fine." You know, and that's... And he'd saunter off to where he was going next. And so he was just an awesome man, and I just feel very fortunate to have known him for as long as I did. So definitely condolences to his family. So shout-outs. We have a lot. We were really very fortunate this fall to receive two nice, very, very nice donations from the First Congregational Church here in town, as well as Saint Peter's Catholic Church. Lots of school supplies and also materials for the Sue Anderson Memorial Classroom, which we're super excited to get up and running. So we are very happy. They... The folks from Saint Peter's actually reached out and said, you know, "What do you need this year?" And we said, "Well, we could really use some beanbag chairs for that classroom." And the next thing we knew, they were coming in with beanbag chairs for them, and I shared a picture with you. And so that was wonderful. And as always, the Congressional Church... Congressional... Congregational. The Congregational Church, again, with multiple boxes of supplies that immediately were able to go right out into classrooms and to students' and teachers' hands, was just wonderful. So thank you again to those organizations for supporting us at Henry Wilson. It's very appreciated. Also want to thank the Farmington PTA. The first morning, they dropped off some beautiful flowers for us, and we took them inside so they didn't get frostbit. And they look awesome in the front of the room, front of the entryway. We want to thank Dr. McGlinchey. There was a tremendous amount of positive feedback following our first Professional Development Days with Todd Whitaker coming to talk to us all. That was really... It was really powerful, and it was really... It was to set a nice tone for the year. So that was awesome, and it's really fun to, like, have conversations with teachers now and hear them kind of using some of his language and the... You're in your business mode or in your parent mode, and so that was really great. So we're very fortunate and thankful for that. Fantastic turnout for open house this year. Hundred and twenty-six families visited classrooms or advisory teachers, and then a hundred and twenty-one families visited UA teachers. So that was really great, and we were really excited. It seemed like there was quite a bit more folks this year than there were last year, so we were really happy about that. We're super happy that we have a soccer coach. We have quite a few kids that were interested in soccer. So when we got the news last week that we had one, it was great. And then the girls volleyball teams, JV and varsity, did a great job at their first game last week as well. They won all of their games, so that was great. School year's off to a great start. New teachers are settling in. Veterans are great as usual. Mr. Rains and I have been walking around as much as we can, doing some observations, seeing lots of hands-on activities, lots of different learning opportunities for kids, lots of outside lessons already this year, and very appropriate, very well behaved, very well structured. Like, it's just been really nice to see, so we're really excited. We did roll out our behavior management approach at Henry Wilson, and I know that was something the board wanted to hear about. And so this year, we're really focusing on grit, and we're talking a lot about grit in our school. We're using that word all the time. Teachers are having conversations with students about it. Students are in gauging activities that start to build grit or give examples of grit. They're contributing to posters, to different things that are in their classroom regarding that. Kind of just going with the verbiage that learning is challenging, and that's okay. It's normal to struggle sometimes. Mistakes are going to happen. That really shows when you're putting in effort and you're forth and you're learning, and we're here to help you, and you can do it. That's kind of our messaging behind all of that. So we're going to keep pushing that forward this year, really focusing on that. We began our staff data meetings. We're doing the one for strictly parent communication and then one for looking at just data formative assessments, things like that. Those have been going really well. We had some teachers bring great ideas to the table about how they want to approach that with families and making sure that every student in our building gets a phone call once a month from a teacher. So that's been great. Teacher help days this year are posted right outside their door, so there's no question about when the teachers' help days are. The kids can clearly see it. All of our teachers also have their class dojo, and we're putting out our monthly newsletter where that information can go out as well. But we're happy to accept feedback, too. So if there's more ways that we can engage families and get communication out there to them, please don't hesitate to bring that to us. We're happy to work through all of those ideas as well. Let's see. The PTA... I have a meeting with the PTA later this week to start working on finalizing the Sue Anderson Memorial Classroom. So I was super happy to see you guys here today. So we're going to get that room up and running, and we're hoping to do a dedication at the end of October. So I will keep you posted on those efforts. And we'd love to have Mr. Anderson here as well for that. That would be wonderful, and you gentlemen as well, obviously. We had our first fire drill. Everybody was out of the building in under four minutes and thirty seconds. I was really happy about that. We did our first clear hallways on the twelfth. That was very successful as well. Our safety committee starts meeting tomorrow. Tasked devices have been a little bit of a learning journey. Every staff member has one now, so that's been awesome. It's just a matter of getting everybody trained properly in how to use them. But I do have to say, we are very much looking forward to Mrs. Palmerite and Ms. Shagnon's videos on how to use the tasker properly. That is long-awaited training. Those are something we're definitely looking forward to. So I just think... I just can't wait. And so one of the struggles so far this year has been the Chromebook fleet did not go the maintenance that we kind of expected it to undergo this summer, and it made getting it out to students and in students' hands far more difficult than I think it needed to be. We do have that. Everybody's got them now. They're all set up. We have what we need. Ms. Shagnon came down, stepped in, helped Mr. Rains. They got it all up and organized and ready, and Chromebooks are in students' hands. But I'm hoping that maybe going into the future, next, you know, at the end of next year, that can be a little bit more streamlined, and we can get some greater support with that because that was a little bit difficult for the beginning of the year. Any questions?
No, it sounds like, oh, really great stuff.
Good start. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have Valley View Community School, and I will introduce Mr. Mark Dangora. Am I saying it right, Mark?
You are.
Okay. This is our new principal at Valley View, especially for those of you viewing at home. We hired Mark late in the season, but he's here, and we're happy to have him here. So welcome aboard, Mark.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chairman. I wasn't able to submit because I found out, you know, later in the week that I had a school board meeting to report. I did submit a hot copy for you, and Giselle can also send the doc. Off to a great start. Again, my name is Mark Dangora. Past five years, I've been in Hudson Elementary as assistant principal of a school about five hundred students. I was glad to see this opportunity arise in August. It's a bit unprecedented sometimes to open two schools up. Was able to do that for twelve school days in Hudson and then finished on Friday and started on Monday. So I'm glad to be here, and I appreciate all of your support. And just the conversations I've had in the last few days have been really rich, knowledgeable, and I'm looking forward to just jumping right in. I do have a few things for tonight's report. We have, like Jamie had mentioned, we have had a fire drill as well and a clear the hallways. And from what I hear, clear the hallways was very successful. Students were able to, you know, get into their classrooms. Doors were locked, and students were able to go about their business. And I'm looking forward to the next drills for October so I can get the lay of the land and have an understanding of that process. We had an amazing open house. We had about seventy-five percent of our families attended. I would say over a hundred and fifty. I don't have an accurate number, but over a hundred and fifty just family members were there. I was able to present for about ten or fifteen minutes. I had a PowerPoint. I did submit it as well. Just to introduce myself and really to talk about responsive classroom, which is really at the heart of what we're working on right now in the elementary school. Most of our staff have been trained in responsive classroom and focusing on specific elements of responsive classroom, morning meeting and closing circle. So how we design the day and how we wrap up the day. I did speak to parents a little bit about that, families a little bit about those expectations. Also, I like responsive classroom because it lends itself into language, common language. The words I like to use is expected behavior. So in the next few, probably a couple of months, Donna Gilbert and I, our assistant principal, will be working on various expected behaviors throughout the hallway, throughout the cafeteria, at recess, and we'll unroll that out within responsive classroom as well. So I'm excited to do that. I've done a lot of that work with PBIS as well in previous school districts, so hopefully, we can have some of those incentives. It's just been a warm embrace, really. I was really impressed with the community on Thursday at open house. Shook a lot of hands and met a lot of nice, really super people who are supportive of their children. And we were able to kind of talk a little bit what... I was able to have some conversations about what people are struggling with, and maybe we can kind of work on some of those ideas together as we move forward. We have had PLCs. We're in our second week of our professional learning communities, and they've been, for me, eye-opening, and I'm able to get an understanding of what each grade level is doing. Like Jamie had mentioned, our focus is on parent engagement this year. And we have the... Our teachers have an assignment this... The next week or two to talk about what that looks like for them as elementary, pre-K to, you know, to third grade, so what that looks like. Also, our teachers are talking about what it might look like to communicate their own classroom information, like their education. And we're going to go with a once-a-month newsletter from each grade-level team, preschool to third grade. So each month, we are going to have all of our teachers participating in a team newsletter, and we'll be able to distribute it through Dojo and maybe through Canva as well. So those conversations are great. They're great for parents to see, for families to see what their kids are doing, and they can kind of share that common language and have an understanding. I did talk a little bit during open house about Table Talk, which is, you know, when you're at supper, you know, what do you talk to your kid? So I think that's really important when we talk about morning meeting, what the morning share was, you know? And developing that common language within each, you know, family and within our teachers in the school is going to be a big priority for me to develop common language. I am excited. I know that Rome wasn't built in a day, and I'm going to go low and slow and try not to stress everybody out, but I'm excited to start. And I'm excited about early release coming up. You know, some of us are leading some writing protocols, which will be interesting to see, which is going to be exciting to see where we're at with that and dig into some of the curriculum as well. So just wanted to say thank you for having me this evening, and I'm excited to kind of move through the process and move through a great school year with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
We're good. Thank you. Welcome aboard again.
Thank you, everybody.
Farmington High School.
First, I'd like to just say that Gil was one of the nicest guys that I've ever worked with. He's a very gentle man and will be missed in condolences to his family. I think kind of looking at what we see here today, the community reaching out, I think that's the vision I have here with the staff at our school, is how do we build that community? And the first thing on your principal's report for me is our goal for kind of curtailing behavior because we know that behavior, there's usually an underlying issue there, and how do we deal with that before it becomes an issue that we have to deal with with consequences? So I came up with a little, I guess, mantra that I keep telling the staff, unity through community. And kind of what I mean by that and kind of what they've already been doing is really kind of understanding the student, getting to understand the parents, the students, the school itself, how it lives and breathes together, and how we all work together. And I think Giselle's goals this year, or the district's goals this year, kind of lay nicely into that. Our communication plan that we're working on, as you'll see later in the PLCs, I think kind of really just fits right in with that idea of how are we going to get to parents and create, I don't want to say a connection, but a partnership because this is really what it's about, is that partnership, and how are we going to ensure that partnership grows, especially with the freshmen coming in? And how can we make it look four years from now even better than it did when they first got here? And that's, you know, a struggle it's been from the very beginning. We try to look at different aspects of the school and how we can communicate better. And Dojo is on our list. Our teachers are a little new to it, so we're trying to roll it out a little bit more slowly to kind of get them used to it. But some are jumping right in, and then others are asking for a little bit of help, so we're trying to find people to help them with that, just to make sure that they're comfortable before putting that out. And we envision... And we envision Dojo to really be that first step of, this is what we're doing in class. This is the, the stuff that your kids are learning about and talking about within these walls. Because we know that when they get home, sometimes, as you were saying, that table talk doesn't necessarily occur because the parents don't know where to begin to have it. And I think bridging that gap helps them a lot with understanding the, the student better. We're also looking at monthly newsletters. I'm not very good at putting it together. I do have one that's funky. But I'll look at Canva and that goal is to either the end of this week or midweek in September to have one out through having departments kind of tell me what they're working on, have sports kind of give us an idea, counseling, give us an idea what they're doing. So, parents kind of get that peek into our world a little bit. Because they can't obviously be in these hallways every day with us and see what we do. And we do good stuff. So, it's, it's good for them to see that. And then, understanding the student, I think, the continuation of really trying to get to them and understand them, I think that's important. So, we work in our advisories and, you know, it's a work in progress too. Advisories are hard if you're not quite sure what to do with them. So, we try to figure out activities or things that they can kind of bridge that gap. Some play games, some talk, but it's really building those connections that are important. And that's what we hope to do. So, unity through community is our plan. And, you know, hopefully, there's a great idea Giselle had, I won't take the credit for. The, have the, the teachers kind of team up in little groups and create posters. And the best poster wins. They'll get something. And we'll make those posters up and put them around the school. And then, the next step would be having the kids do it too, so that they're talking about unity through community. Because I think that the more we hammer it home, the better they understand it and kind of understand what that means in the end. I, I think the years kind of looked the same as the other two schools. We've had our first day. We do only have freshmen that come in. I would think that they had fun. It sounded like they were having fun. They were running around, doing their scavenger hunt, trying to ask all the teachers different questions about who's who. And, you know, some you wouldn't even guess of their, their kind of riddle of who they are. They were playing volleyball against the teachers. They were learning stuff. They got to meet all the staff. It was just a really nice day for them to come in, kind of get the lay of the land and feel like they belonged. And then, the next day happens and everyone's here. And with that comes, you know, everyone kind of learning who, who each other are. And that was a really nice day. We have all the classes in one day. So, everyone gets to meet their teachers that one day and then they get to go home. And then, the regular classes start, like how the, the real day starts. So, they got to kind of ease into it. It wasn't something so demanding that, you know, they went home hopefully frightened. Like, they came back and they were doing well. And I would say this year, out of all the years, and I've only been here two, but out of all those years, I, I believe this year has rolled out the nicest, like the staff seemed very positive, hopefully. Wink at Paul there. But it seems, seems like it's gone pretty well. The plane build, credit to Paul. He's everywhere, it seems. He and Carol and Chuck Trainer are doing wonderful things with that and really pushing it. And this is probably, you know, I haven't been here long again, but one of the greatest things that happened at the high school. So, that the kids have something different. And it, it will definitely give us something different for students to look at. And Paul's jumped ahead first. So, it's really nice to see that. They've gone on trips, which is great out of the school, not because we don't want them here, but because any experience outside the building is great. They did a, you went to the?
Brown Center.
Brown Center and they were doing team building activities with, was a rope course, right? So, just any of those times that they can get out of the building, meet different people is just fantastic for them. TASTA, Lori, I'd like to give a shout out to her. Lori Shagnon came up and she spent some time with the staff, kind of trying to answer those questions. They were very nervous about the TASTA devices, just because, you know, you hear things. But also because they've been going off and they didn't want that to happen or do things wrong. So, she came up. We had a list of questions on the board or the smart screen there. And she was gracious enough to take her time to really talk to the staff and willing to come back and help out whoever needs it. She's been up here a few times with people with problems, trying to figure those things out. I would say every day it gets a little easier and I think she gets a little more knowledgeable and we all kind of learn from it too. So, it's great. PLCs, again, I think this year, we're kind of looking at it a little differently. We're meeting with the staff once a week. Ours, we have to split up a little bit because I can't fit everyone down here without the kids kind of just running around with no one watching them. But we've, we focused on those parent communications and then we're working on SMART goals. Which is, you know, the department-driven. So, they're working on their department-driven SMART goals to kind of, what is it that they want to kind of get data from and to try to improve for the student? And then, after school, or not after school, but our full faculty meeting, we've been looking at, or we've only had one. But we're going to look at UBDs and really talk about, we started off with essential questions. So, excuse me. Sorry, it gets dry so fast. Essential questions and the leadership team just met with me last Tuesday, Thursday, last Thursday, for our first time. And we looked at those essential questions and it's now trying to figure out, how are we going to build those? Make those stronger for some, work on tweaking a few. And really kind of get that inquiry into the students. We really want to drive them. And then, homecoming's coming up, October 4th, 6th and 9th for the students. So, we look forward to that, day of sports, or it's really a night and a day of sports. And then, in athletics, Mr. Moser has his coaches picking students or athletes of the week. So, two had been named. There's two more, but I didn't have those for this, and I'm not quite sure who they picked. So, but those students will be honored with something from. Yes, thank you. I didn't want to say the wrong place. But yeah, Jersey Mike. So, they get something for being the athlete of the week. So, it's, it's been a really nice start of the year. I think things, for me at least, have slowed where, you know, we have plenty of things to work on. I have, I have plenty of things I need to work on, but overall, it's just been really good.
Any questions?
Thank you, guys.
Audit update.
We just wanted to tell you, we're going to have one eventually. We're working on it. Rita was in today. She was in last week as well and.
Rita's our consultant from MRI. For those of you watching from home, that's been focusing on audit. Prep.
That we, you know, we are working on it and I'm hoping.
How often does Rita come?
Right now, it's been, it's been weekly for right now. But she will be in tomorrow and Wednesday and potentially Saturday. So, to, to get us in a shape where our auditors can come and it should go smoothly. Versus it being super messy and sloppy and, you know, just not worthwhile for them.
Thank you. Year-end filing.
So, it's going to happen, isn't it?
It's going to happen.
So, we're going to have a board meeting on the 29th.
Correct.
For that. Stephanie and one of the consultants are going to work this weekend on it. So, we're hoping that everything will turn out fine.
And that's a, that agenda will just be light.
Yes.
You know, if we had to do a nomination or something like that, we could, but we'll, that'll be the focus. Mr. Henry, are you able to tape that?
When was it?
Next Monday, the 29th.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so that'll be next week.
Read a couple things after we made the agenda. I don't know if you want to address them for new business. One would be the refrigerator at Valley View.
Tell us about it. Didn't we already?
No, that was the freezer.
That was the freezer. Now, it's the fridge.
Now, it's the fridge.
So, we're going to need a public hearing, correct?
Yep. We do have money in the capital reserve fund. And the estimate for this is $14,865.91. I feel really bad for both Matt, Shaheen from FreshPix and Larry. You know, FreshPix would report that it wasn't up or down to temp. And Larry would bring in Joe Warren and Sons. They'd go, they'd check it. Everything was fine. This happened 30 times. And then, finally, it wasn't at temp and they were able to diagnose it. And, you know, this is, this is the stuff that's keeping Larry up at night.
So, it's not repairable?
It is not repairable. And so, that's where we are in order to make that happen.
So, let's, tomorrow, let's get the public notice out because we need at least 10 days. And we'll have the public hearing at our October, first October meeting, whatever that is, the 6th. And get it voted on.
Can we wait that long? They are, both FreshPix and our facilities are working together to bring like the milk up into the milk cooler daily and stuff. So, I think we can go for a little while.
I mean, we can't spend the money the other.
I just didn't know that, I didn't know that that date was 10 days out. It just seemed longer than that. Okay.
Well, well, no, well. Yeah, I mean, I say get it out tomorrow, but I mean, it would put us like on a Saturday or something.
Right. 10 days of October 6th from today. From today, so October 3rd. So, it's a Friday, so it would be a weekend.
So far away, but it's not.
Right. So, it would be, no, Friday, no, right, Friday and I have Saturday, Sunday. October just seemed far away.
It does seem far away.
All right.
We did have the building inspector come visit again.
Yep.
And I just, I feel it's important to mention because he did come in the spring when we had, our two maintenance people were out. And he, he noted a number of things. And at that time, we explained we did not have the manpower to do it, nor did we have the budget. He did return and some of it was done. Some of it was in direct contrast to our craze training. So, for example, anchoring bookcases. Well, there's two schools of thought in that. If you go with the building inspector, small children could scale a bookshelf and it, and it could fall on them. I would hope that our teachers are paying enough attention that they would notice that. But from a safety standpoint, the police would say, do not anchor those because in the event you needed them to barricade a door, you need to have those. So, so there's some things like that, ceiling tiles, and then there were a number of other things. But we just, we didn't have the manpower to do it. Now, we do have two maintenance people on staff who are going through as much as they can. I think the thing that was really troublesome is we've inherited this budget and we're doing the best we can with it. But Mr. Eckberg seems to think, as he was a principal before, that he said that all principals, all, all school districts have a million dollar slush fund. And I just need to put it out there that we, we don't have a million dollar slush fund. And that he was very upset that we spent money to refinish the gym floors and that we spent money to fund athletics. And he feels that all that should be taken off the table until the safety stuff is taken care of.
Yeah, and I, you had sent an email and CC'd on, CC'd me on it. The email went to town administrator.
Yes.
Can we set up a meeting?
Yes.
With you, myself, you, the town administrator, and I, I think it's time that I meet this gentleman. I have no idea who he is and I'd love to meet him.
And he could direct us to that one million dollars.
If he knows where we can find it.
You have that one million dollar slush fund in, baby. Please call us right now.
We'd be happy to access it, but.
I, I just wanted that out there. Like, there is not a million dollar slush fund.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that set up. We'll get that set up. Is there any public participation at this time? Before we do our unsealed minutes, I'm sorry, was there?
Oh, sorry. Paul. Yeah, I was, I was just saying, yeah, you can't go now if you want to.
To do what?
If they wanted to leave.
Oh, sure.
Oh, no, I think he had something.
Oh, yeah, we do have new business. It's another donation to accept.
Oh, okay. Do you want to take the microphone?
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I should have done it before.
If it's a million dollars, you're really, really going to love it.
I just found the million dollar slush fund. But I, so what's happening, this is in pertaining to the plane project. One of the things that the students are asked to do is to participate in their yearly gala, which is a fundraising event. A lot of the people who donated the money for this project are going to be there. They would be very interested in hearing how our students are doing, how they like the project, what they're getting out of it. And it's also a chance for our students to meet the students at the other schools that are also doing the, the plane build project. And I think it's a very unique way for them to meet because they're all going to have common stories about very particular things. And they're widespread, you know, it is physically widespread. So, they, they can actually come together and say, hey, do you remember doing this or whatever? And they can tell them, you know, lessons learned that they had from previous years in buildings. So, it's a very valuable experience. But one of the things is that I would, my aim is to have the students, when they go there, to be well dressed for it. And so, I went to the men's warehouse and I asked if we could work on a deal. And he said that he could put the young men into a $300 suit for $200 and throw in a shirt and tie. And then, I also have three females in the class. And I figure if this is what's allotted for the young men, the young females should get the same amount. I went out and I found some people who are willing, who have, I have checks, donate money. So, the, the total is $2,200, $2,200, 11 students times 200. And so, I would like to give it to Farmington and then have Farmington be able to send a check to the men's warehouse and then get gift cards for the young ladies. And they have specific instructions on what business wear would be. So, they're not dressing for the prom. They're not adding to their Goth collection or something like that. It's, this is a business type of event and they get to keep the clothes. And then, as there are further functions later on in the year, throughout the year, this would be the attire that they're expected to wear. So, the trick now is to get the money out of my bag. Into Farmington and then out to the men's warehouse because it is also October 10th. And I'd like the, the people to go shopping. And they, they know, the men's warehouse knows that they're coming.
I don't think we, we technically don't have to accept. Is that over the threshold? What's that threshold? Is it that?
I thought it was any gift donation over 500.
Is it 500? Why did I think it was like 200? I don't know. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the $2,200 donation for the Plane Project Gala.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Lozey, second by Mrs. Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You're doing a lot of really great things. So, thank you.
Before, we have manifest to sign, obviously, and our next meeting will be September 29th, which is a week from tonight. But before we unseal these, we take these unsealed minutes off the table, I do want to thank Diana Jansen. Diana, usually retirements are announced prior to the end of the school year. And we're able to, you know, I usually call up to the schools and talk to the individuals. And we've acknowledged folks and announced their retirements at school board meetings. But Mrs. Diana Jansen retired in August, I believe. And so, and I believe she started here in 97, I want to say, somewhere in that frame. I think it was 1997. She actually started working here. So, she had been here a lot of years. And had, you know, when you're, when you're one of the two folks in the, in the main office, you really are a piece of the backbone of the school, especially when you're here that long. You have a lot of institutional knowledge that you gain over the years. And I know that she worked closely with Cheryl Moody for years and was, you know, one of those folks behind the scenes at graduation that really made that event pull off amongst other things. So, we thank you, Diana, and we wish you well in your retirement. Thank you for your service to the district. Again, our next meeting, September 29th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion to take the two sealed minutes off the, off the table.
Yep, I'll take a motion. I'll take a motion. I'll take a motion. I'll make the motion to take the sealed minutes from the table.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, another motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 2nd, 2025, non-public session one sealed and non-public session two sealed.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lozey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're going to sign off, folks. Thank you for being here this evening. And those of you viewing from home, I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session, I don't know why that says two, non-public session one under RSA 91-A:32ABNC for nominations and resignations. So, moved by Mrs. Johnston, second by Mrs. Lozey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, folks.